And see here, we will have Councilman Hensley will lead us in prayer. And we have some miscellaneous agenda items this evening, including a pandemic update, which will be a written update from Christie. We will recognize our finance department for some awards this evening. And Councilman Hussey, Item C, he's actually going to be at the next meeting. So we can, we'll move that to the following meeting. And we do have a public hearing, Mr. Marash.
Yeah, thank you. And that also includes the bill to adopt a new rate table for the wastewater rates and the wastewater fund. Basically, my thought was I'd give the presentation I've given several times now, since we're having the public hearing tonight. And that way, people have the opportunity, if they just tuned in now, to see that presentation. And then, so that's kind of what I had in mind of doing. That's pleased with the council.
Okay, any questions? All right, and? Item six, appointments by the mayor. Mrs. Strope.
Thank you. This is for an ad hoc committee, just a group of individuals who will be put together to look at the historic preservation code.
Any questions on that? And under announcements, I might call on one of you to mention the ribbon cutting tomorrow. Would that be you, Mr. Marash?
Sure.
Okay, I'll call on you for that. And then? Item 10, or let's see, we have a few people already signed up, I believe, and we'll continue to take, okay, we'll continue to take names on that. Any questions on consent? Councilman? Kemna? Okay. Perfect, I will call on you. Sure, I'll call on you then, under, under announcements, so, perfect, thank you. And we have several bills introduced, so we'll run through some of them fairly quickly. But the first one here has a check mark, number 13, Chief Schofield.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The council may recall that we had funding approved previously, April 19th. That was ordinance 16123 for the replacement, the roof at Fire Station Number Three. This is a contract. Actually make that happen, so there was some discussion about different options. We did put this out to bid on two different occasions. First time, we only received two bids back, and there was some confusion over the alternates that we wanted to specify in there. We, from the very beginning, wanted to get a really good bead on whether we would replace this with an asphalt roof or potentially a metal roof. So we got prices back for both. And this contract represents the low bid. It was for an asphalt roof. There are other options within that bid packet. They are significantly more expensive, so happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, and item 14, Mr. Marash?
Yeah, thank you. Basically, it's a, it's a seal coat project, part of our asphalt overlay menu of projects we're doing, but it's a little over $97,000. And we're doing a cooperative procurement on this, so Mobley had bid this project similarly, had a good bid, so we'll piggyback on their contract to do this, this work.
Thank you, any questions? Item 15 is just a withdrawn bill that had already been placed on there before it was able to be taken off the agenda, so we'll disregard that. Number 16, Mr. Marash?
Thank you. So this would, this is a study for our transit facilities. It's called transit feasibility, but it's really, when it boils down to it, it's our transit facility, so that's our office space, central maintenance, things like that. So we were able to secure a grant through Campo to pay for the majority of this study, so $40,000 of the 50 would come from, through those funds, the planning grant. I think I'm calling that right, Sunny can correct me if not. But anyway, and so we'd hire a contract with Cook, Flat and Strobel. They have a local office here, engineering office here, and they have some architects they work with to do these type studies for city facilities. Once that were completed, then, you know, it would kind of give us a cost estimate and a footprint, those kind of things of a new transit facility. Then we'd be able in a position to apply for grants to try to get those, those kind of things actually constructed. So we've done a couple of these in the past, so we're kind of honing in on, on a, looking at Hyde Park, if anything can be done there, as well as our current facility where our transfer station would remain. But happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilwoman Wiseman?
Yeah, didn't we just do a transit? Didn't we just do a transit audit?
Well, we've done a couple of things. So, you know, the last study we did in transit was more about ridership and routes, things of that nature, so it wasn't facility orientated. But now, we also had, unless you're talking about the triane review, which was a review of our whole operations by the feds, they do it every three years. And so actually, I had a meeting with them this morning about that, so I'm not sure which one you're asking about.
I was asking more about the, the first one, the feasibility study that we did, and it didn't include anything about buildings, and it didn't include, because I know we talked about routes, and we talked about moving routes, and, I mean, we did some moving of routes, but...
Yeah, that, that, that one didn't focus on the facilities. Now, in the past, there was one done on facilities. It, it was looking at moving the transfer points to even up here by City Hall, all over the place. This was before I was really involved with transit, but that was several years old. One of the issues with that is, is that, you know, obviously, we don't control those properties. Those, those studies looked at moving the facility away from where our ridership is, maybe to a new location. If you move that out off Hyde Park somewhere, then for that facility, you know, how do our users get there? You know, a lot of them walk to the facility now, so we want to keep it, try to keep it in the same place. What do we have to do to our building to make it compliant, that kind of thing? It's quite old, from the early 1980s, like 1982. You can imagine the bathrooms are out of date, and size, just the sizes, ADA, all that stuff. And then, the central maintenance facility was constructed with that building in the past. Obviously, we keep updating that as we go, but it would be nice to maybe look at a location for that separate of the bus facility. So that's, again, looking at city, already city-owned properties, if those could fit in those locations.
Thank you. Number 17, Mr. Marash?
Yeah, thank you. So, everybody knows where, we've been talking about city-county funding with the sales tax, and so we're coming to the end of the current sales tax, and that's what these two next things are about, but having agreements with the county, the county's already signed off on these. But basically, and we've talked about them at other meetings here at the city, whether it's public works and planning, and I think maybe, might even talk at a council meeting already, but, so what came of that was two projects to kind of look at what we would do with the funds as a result of, you know, changing, changing gears with the Clark and Dunkland project. But basically, Grant Street is this first agreement, so this is an agreement for Grant Street, a city-county project. And they would propose to use $550,000 of the city-county, county funds for this project. And so it's a Grant Street sidewalk, sorry about that. And then it also has some amenities right at the entrance of the park, so this is where the new amphitheater is and those kind of things. And so there's some islands being built and some ways to maneuver people through there. And, and we're anticipating that the Parks Department would cover that, the additional funds there, about $100,000 for, for a total of a $650,000 project. So what this does is, we presented this to county, they liked the plan. We've talked about it at probably works and planning committee meeting, so this would basically get them to send us the money within 30 days signing this agreement, so we could proceed.
Thank you. Number 18, Matt?
So, the second piece of that is, when we come to the end of these sales tax, we always look at the dollar amount each party's contributed towards the projects. And the, the overall commitments, 11 million from each, or total, 5.5 million from each entity. And so, we, after we've ticked off all our projects, including the Grand Street one I've just talked about, and doing some, still, there's still some minor adjustments to come over at Clark and Dunkland. We have that contracted, I don't believe they've started it yet, we've got some lighting, I think the lighting's been done, though. But, the, so this would be, the remainder of that money would be contemplated to move to the MSP project. That's where we have our grant through the Economic Development Administration, EDA. And so, anyway, the, the project would be, you know, to construct the infrastructure related to the conference center and hotel, et cetera, at the MSP. So, by doing this, it actually does a good thing, so we'd end up with about a four and a half million dollar project, and to break it down, the county would be, it'd get their a little over 1.5 million of their remaining funds, that's, that would total them out to the 11 million. Then we'd already pledged 1.4 of the city funds, and then the EDA grant on top of that one, another 1.5 million. So that, those monies, we estimate, should go ahead and do all the infrastructure that was committed to when we obtained the state, state's property. So, prior to moving this money over here, though, you know, we had that road that went up the hill, that wasn't in our grant proposal at the time, we just ran out of funding. But this, this has allowed us to go ahead and fulfill that commitment to get that, once we got, that we said we got would do, once we got the property, and not have future projects like this, we anticipate, in the next sales tax. So if we looked at the next sales tax brochure, UNC MSP like you have for the last 17 years, this, we anticipate would do, do all our commitments here.
All right, thank you. We've got about three minutes, so we'll run through these really quick. On number 19, Sunny, you'll take that one. Would it be you?
Mr. Dave Helmick's going to do 19 and 20, abatement and demolition supplemental appropriations.
Okay, and then on 21, would that be Ryan?
Yeah, on 21, I'll explain a little bit further, but it looks like that one is actually going to be withdrawn, so. A request to be withdrawn by staff. 22.
Call on you.
Yeah, 22 is a, is a vacation of the right of way, actually, the alleys that are behind here in the police station.
Okay, and number 23?
23 is approving some code language and a form license agreement for, for small vehicle shared active transportation operations, not my term, but scooter businesses.
Okay, and on the informal, we have number three, and Councilman Fitzwater. Okay, and then on the resolutions, there's three resolutions, Mr. Sanders?
Yes, 2021-4 is an application for a historic preservation grant. We actually had to apply for it already, the deadline was June 1st. Rachel Sensi will be presenting that to the council.
Okay, and then, number five, Ryan?
Yeah, this resolution authorizes the execution of an assignment and assumption agreement that relates to the city's Chapter 100 bond project at the Continental Commercial Projects, or Products Project. Essentially, this is an agreement that allows for transfer of the bonds from one company to another, essentially, the, the, the project, the business is being sold. But because the, the real estate and the personal property is actually held entitled by the city, this, this agreement has to be executed by the city. We have some commitments that the city would not unreasonably withhold its consent, and neither staff nor bond council has found any reason why that consent should be withheld, so this is, has a approval recommendation.
Okay, and number six, Sunny?
Yes, Katrina Williams herded city staff in participating with this planning activity, so she'll be presenting the resolution to the council. And there is a member of the Regional Planning Commission, which put the plan together, that can answer questions if she cannot answer those. Glad to answer any questions.
Okay, and any questions before we adjourn? All right, and a quick housekeeping issue, we will have an introduction of Teagan after item three, so just a heads up, we'll let you tell a little about, about yourselves, Mr. Kroll will introduce you, so, thank you. All right, with that, I will call this meeting adjourned, and we will get ready to start our meeting. Just wait for the signal from the back, are we good to start? Okay, and you're hearing us okay on our microphones, anyone need to get closer, are we good? Okay. All right, so, welcome, everyone. So, before we begin our meeting, we will have a prayer by Councilman Hussey, followed by the, I'm sorry, Hensley. Wow. So sorry, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, teach us to be generous. Teach us to serve our neighbors as they require. To give of ourselves and not to count the cost, to fight and not to heed the wounds, to toil and not to seek for rest, to labor and not to ask for reward. Except to know that we are applying our best judgment and efforts to the betterment of our community. And we pray especially for our neighbors, who work to secure and protect our public safety, who put themselves between danger and the rest of us, day and night. We are grateful for them and for all that they do to keep us safe. And for all of the unspoken intentions of those assembled here, we say amen.
A allegiance to the flag, states of America, to the republic for the stand of the God of the nation.
I will now call to order the Monday, June 7th, city council meeting, and there is virtual joining information on our website at JeffersonCityMo.gov. On the agenda, you can click on the link, or you can call in participation, and that information is also listed on the agenda. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Present.
Hensley?
Present.
Kemna?
Present.
Lester?
Here.
Schreiber?
Spencer?
Here.
Spicer?
Present.
Vought?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Wiseman?
Present.
Item three, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. And we have a special introduction Mr. Kroll would like to make at this time.
I'd like to introduce Teagan Trammell, with, who is a political science student at Benedictine College. So, want to give any other information?
Nope, nope, that's about it. I mean, just here to learn a little bit about city administration.
Learning a little bit about, yeah, city administration and some operations in almost over a three-day period, so.
Exactly. Thanks for having me.
We're very happy to have you here, we hope that you learn a lot, and would invite our council members to get a chance to meet you, and that you could also ask them any questions that you would have on your mind, so glad to have you here. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items, we will start with item A, which is our pandemic update, and we have a written report from Christie Campbell, so I will read through that now. And it says, Cole County's current vaccination rate is approximately 39% positive COVID cases and hospitalizations remain low. So I should say, I, sorry, I just put my readers on, which I should have done before I started this meeting. The vaccination rate is approximately 39%. Positive COVID cases are low. COVID vaccines are available in many places, there are currently 14 locations in Cole County that offer COVID vaccinations. The Cole County Community Vaccination Site at the Capitol Mall offers vaccine on Thursdays. Pfizer and Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines are currently available. You can register at covidvaccine.mo.gov or walk in anytime before 4:00 PM. The community site will offer vaccinations until July 15th. JCMG and retail pharmacies also have vaccine available. Most retail pharmacies like Hy-Vee, Walmart and Target are open every day and do not require an appointment. All locations in Missouri can be found on covidvaccine.mo.gov by clicking on the Get a Vaccine and then Find a Vaccine. Enter your zip code to find your vaccine locations near you. The Community Health Center of Central Missouri will be offering vaccines at all the mobile food pantry events in June. If there's any questions, you can call the Cole County Health Department at 636-2181 or visit colehealth.org. So does council have any questions or anything to add? So we do have, every two weeks, we have a meeting with Christie and other hospital and health partners, and they will be putting out a press release tomorrow that will include this information to share with the community as well. to share with the community as well. And item B, we are going to recognize Sheila Perry and Kara Sankey of the Finance Department for the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Popular Annual Financial Report Awards. I'd like to have Mr. Kroll and Ms. Miller to present tonight.
I'll have Marjorie Miller come forward. She is the Director of Finance and Information Technology. And the city's pleased to announce that we have again received the Governmental Finance Officers Association recognition for our comprehensive annual financial report and our popular annual financial report.
That's correct.
Marjorie's going to go through a little bit of the information about it. But I just want to say the thanks to the mayor and city council for supporting the extra effort that it takes for the city to provide that information. And it is a lot of extra effort by staff as well. And I think it also speaks well for the information that's provided for citizens. They can get a good idea of the financial information very comprehensively, so.
So, the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, established the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting back in 1945 to encourage and assist state local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles to prepare an annual comprehensive financial report that evidences the spirit of transparency and full disclosure, and then to recognize those individual governments that succeed in achieving that goal. So, this certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. So, the GFOA also established the Popular Annual Financial Report in 1991 to encourage and assist state and local governments to extract the information from their annual report to produce high-quality, popular annual financial reports, specifically designed to be readily accessible and easily understandable to the general public and other interested parties without a background in public finance, and then to recognize individual governments that are successful in achieving that goal. The eligible reports are reviewed by judges who complete an evaluation form that scores on categories such as overall quality and usefulness of the report, creativity, presentation, reader appeal, understandability, and distribution methods. And I just want to make something very clear. Sometimes there is a misperception that because the annual comprehensive financial reports are audited by our external auditors, that the auditors are responsible for preparing this report. And that is not the case. Except for the auditor's opinion letter and an internal control and compliance letter, every page of this 146-page document is prepared by our finance staff. So, congratulations to Sheila Perry, our chief accountant, and Kara Sankey, our senior accountant, for all of your hard work and attaining these high program standards.
Want to introduce Sally as well?
Yeah. And we do have another finance staff person in the back, Ally Reese. She's fairly new with the city, but you may have seen her face. Congratulations.
Thank you for such a wonderful team. And this award is something that we certainly enjoy celebrating, and it's not something we take for granted, because we know that it is a lot of work that goes towards this. So, you definitely make us proud that you continue to strive for this level of reporting and being able to attain the status for the city is a really big deal. It's very important. So, we thank you for that. And we would like to, we'll get a photo here, opportunity with the award. But also wanted to mention that we also have, it looks like, Kara, that you will be moving on after 10 years of service to the city of Jefferson. You will be missed, but we wish you well in your new venture. And you've been an amazing asset to the city at the time that you've been here. So, we appreciate that. Anything to add? Okay.
Appreciate all the work, and you're welcome to come back and work on a couple of comprehensive annual financial reports if, you know, you really want to.
Great. Well, thank you, and best wishes for you. We appreciate you, Kara. And we appreciate all of the hard work that you all do. And we would like to get a photo opportunity. So, if you all want to come forward, and you're welcome to come up as well. And then, I would invite any council members who would want to participate in this photo opportunity, or welcome to come behind me if they would choose to do so. All right. And item C is actually going to be on the next city council agenda. Councilman, former Councilman Ken Hussey will be at our next meeting to introduce the Capital Improvements Sales Tax H Committee. So, we are looking forward to that, which will be on the August 3rd ballot. Item five, public hearings. Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Thought I'd come up here and run through this presentation again. As you can see, these are at least the locations or the times we presented the same document, our presentation, back in February, March, and then now tonight. But basically, it's the same information. But if anybody's watching or pick up on these items, we could do it again. And I'll be fairly quick, but flag me down if you have a question, and we'll just keep moving through it. But just kind of our status, we had a bond issuance back in 2010, and we have utilized all those funds. So, now we're basically on a cash basis, if you will. And then, 2021, we're looking at that, and we've reduced our capital considerably. You know, on a cash basis, some of these are very expensive projects. You've got to keep a certain amount of funds in the fund balance through bond covenants and city covenants and various things. So, we've reduced that back. And they not only do projects, but we buy heavy equipment with this, things like that, and maintain our facilities as well, pay our staff, things like that. Low-interest money right now from Missouri DNR, under 1%. So, that's pretty good, almost like spending cash, if you will, on that type of thing. So, you know, it's a good time to borrow money if we have a rate structure in place and all the approvals. So, sometimes you need to do that to keep your rates low. So, you know, one way we go about this, or how we go about this, is we look at our needs list, and we come up pretty easily with $44 million. And this isn't really comprehensive. These are the biggies. And of course, we do other things out of cash every year, as well, as you all know probably. But these are some of our big projects. And then, again, we're looking for a project that would fit that SRF funding criteria. And we found, you know, the big one there, the BioSolids project out at the treatment plant, $10 million upgrade, that would fit that nicely for some of the requirements. So, we think we, if we could get approvals, we could be successful in getting that loan through there. But we could also do other type of bonding and loans as well, just depending on how the financing goes. So, as we flip through this, if you, revert your eyes if you're squeamish. But basically, why do we do all these projects and keep up with this stuff? But, you know, number one, it's, you know, if we have issues with our sewer, that means basically you have overflows or backups in people's basements, things like that. And, you know, that's bad for the public health and bad for the environment. And so, you know, the top one is a picture out of something here in town that backed up in somebody's house. That came from the sewer main, not just their main. And it went on down the hallway, and it was pretty nasty stuff. We ended up buying that, that was actually in a, like a mobile home type thing. So, we ended up buying that whole thing from them because of this issue. But anyway, the bottom one, you know, that's if you're out in the woods and you come on a sewer manhole and it looks like this. Well, obviously, there's been an overflow. That's bad for the environment, too. And so, anyway, we have to report all these things as we come upon them. If you ever smell a sewer odor and you're out walking or whatever, I do occasionally. I'll call the sewer guys right away, because we want to get it before it gets to be one of these things. And so, what's happening is the sewer's probably clogged in some fashion. It's backing up whatever the issue. So, we want to go out there and investigate before we have something like this occur. These lead to compliance issues with EPA if you have enough of them. And you're going to have some of them if you run a sewer system. That's just in the cards. But you want to keep them at a minimum. But if we have too many, then, you know, you get in compliance issues. You start dealing with our DNR and EPA. And, you know, that has the potential really to affect your rates. Because what happens is you get in a compliance issue, they're going to start looking at your rates, comparing it to some others things. And I'll talk about that in a minute. But basically, they'll say, well, maybe you're not charging enough, because you're not doing enough projects. And you wouldn't have all these things hurting people's homes or the environment. So, you have to do a lot of projects in a short amount of time. And that has the potential to really jack your rates up, so you can borrow that money. And so, we don't want to go there. We've been there in the past. But, you know, of course, deferred maintenance, you know, costs more all the time. One thing I'll touch on here in a minute, but basically, you know, if, and our rates are considerably lower than this. So, in Cole County, the median household income was right at $60,000 in 2019. And so, a lot of times, an indicator is, you know, what's about 2% of that for your wastewater rates? And that would be about $100 a month in Cole County. So, we're a lot lower than that now. But, so just give me an idea of some rate comparisons, and these are really alphabetical instead of number order, but just cities around us and here in Missouri. But again, that affordability, about 100 bucks there. And so, you look at others' rates, we're right in there with Columbia right now. And you get big systems like ours, and you get some economy of scale, right? So, you know, we have this treatment plant over here, but we have capacity. And that's why we'll make contracts with Holt Summit, for example. We're treating their waste or Saint Martins and all these other communities. But as you go through that, we're about $34 a month right now. You can kind of see there where everybody else is falling. But you go down to Saint Joe, and we meet with these guys on a regular basis and gals at our quarterly conference. Once COVID is over now, hopefully, we get back to that. So, we have quarterly meeting with a lot of communities around the state. And it usually occurs right here in Jefferson City, so it's easy for us to get to. But we know kind of what their enforcement actions look like, so we can kind of keep track of each other. But their bill was greatly increased after that. So, we're trying to avoid something like that in Jefferson City, and we have in the past by doing this. Wardsville, you know, they've sold out recently, Missouri American Water Company. So, they have a tariff that goes through the Public Service Commission, which is an office down Jefferson City. And so, we know their rates are being proposed just under $70 a month. I'm not sure if they're actually implemented at that right now. They might be, since I've done this several months ago. And Taos is actually another one that's getting ready to sell. If you caught the article in the paper maybe two, three weeks ago, that they're selling to Missouri American. They, at one time, were in discussions with Jefferson City many years ago. I was involved in those. And they ended up going their own direction. Now, they've decided, well, now their enforcement actions and things like that, and their system needs some maintenance. And so, they're selling to Missouri American. They're going to end up with about, probably the same rate there, about $70 a month for their average household. And they, you know, everybody's a little different based on water usage, but we're just trying to do some averages. So, so there's two ways to go about this. Pay as you go. That's don't borrow money and just try to pay it as you go. And so, we look at that 44 million of projects we think we should be doing. And right now, you know, we're up here at about 31. Now, something that you probably got a letter from, I believe, Ed Racker sent something to the council about people outside the city, even though they're part of our system, they're billed at a little higher rate. So, they get multiples of the base rate, we call it, plus water usage. And so, if you're outside the city, you're paying about, compared if you're inside. And this is based on, I want to say, 4,400 gallons of, hello, where Eric's here. Yeah. So, if you're using 4,400 gallons of water on your water bill, this would be your rate. And so, we just compared those across. So, if you're outside the city, currently, you're about $54 a month, and that's coming to us. But we have to drive outside the city, maintain those facilities, and things of that nature. And we take responsibility for those, maintain all those easements. And so, it is fair to charge a little more to go outside the city and do that. Saint Martins, again, they have a little bit different deal. They own the infrastructure. We help maintain it and things like that. But, so theirs is slightly different based on some of those considerations. The, and they have a long, I think, we had an annexation agreement, which some of this factored into several years ago. And so, that's where that rate came from. We also have another rate. I didn't put it in here, because it's, the city of Holt Summit pays it based on flow, a flow meter. So, that's, that goes into our fund. But, you know, these are household individuals here. But it pays you go. And so, we kind of started looking at, okay, how can we do some of these improvements? And broke them down, you know, the first few years. And you get down to about 2027, which is what our rate table is here, we're talking about. And our outside-the-city customers start hitting that $100 a month. Now, not the lawyer in the room, but you might start generating lawsuits, say, hey, it's unaffordable. What are you guys doing to us? Things like that. Because really, this council gets to decide what the rates are. And so, you often hear, you might hear that, hey, I don't have good representation about this, so. But anyway, and so you can see where the city's rates go over time. And so, you know, you look here at the bottom. Oops. Pointer going down in here. So, you know, you kind of did the percents over here. So, in this pay-as-you-go option, by 2027, you still can't afford all the 44 million. But you go from 0.63% of your median household income to about a percent and a half over those few years. And so, fairly steep rate increases, but it would, you can still get there, but it starts getting pretty steep. So, we compare that to if we estimated what we could bond these or borrow money and do these same capital improvements to the whole 44 million. And this is what's reflected. This is our recommendation in the rate table. But up here, so if you were to implement this, is what we have in the council agenda, 2% this year and then 5% thereafter, you can kind of see where we're at. We go from 0.63 currently to 0.86 over that, what, six-year period, six, seven-year period. And that is, again, based on 2019 median household income, so, in Cole County. Statewide average, about a percent and a half. So, you can kind of see the differences there. We get more money to do projects and try to keep up with our system and keep our rates much lower. So, that's why it's the preferred option. Nobody wants to pay anymore for what goes down the drain, right? Basically, in the council agenda tonight, we had introduced it already, and Ryan can help me out on this. I was a little foggy on how this worked. But basically, we introduced this already at that time, I think, because of this hearing needing to happen and certain advertising requirements. We had to be put off until this time at this council meeting. So, it's been introduced with the decision tonight. So, it's in the, it's in your packet of what that looks like. I didn't include it here. Assuming the council adopts the rate table, you know, the next step, we start talking about, well, how do we actually then go about doing some of that bonding? Because then, there's things like, if you want to do SRF money, you have to have elections to see if you can go in debt. The public would support that, based on this rate table we're adopting. But, and if you look at the rate table, it's not as, maybe it's a little less intuitive than this, where it shows how much we're charging per cubic foot of water usage. So, that's just a way that these water companies measure their water usage. So, we convert that to get to these numbers. But, so this is a little more straightforward here.
Question. So, how do you figure the rates for folks that are on a well system?
Well, there's some availability, and maybe Eric can answer some of these more technical questions, but.
Making an assumption based on occupancy of the state, just tell us how many state criteria.
And do we have a, we have data that we know who, how many people are on their own water system, well system?
Approximately 200 customers that are on wells.
We have approximately 200 customers that are on wells.
That are using the system.
Right.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Ward?
I learned from city staff that you look at usage, January through March, and that determines the amount they're going to pay for the entire year. In those events where there is like a change in someone's family makeup that creates a hardship within that household, or there was something like a running toilet for a really long time and increased their water usage, is there any type of protocol in place that the city uses to address looking at usage at another time? I mean, Eric and I did discuss this, but just to share for the public.
Right. And just on the first part of that, I'll say, the reason it's done in those three months, so if your water meter's out there and you're washing your car, that doesn't obviously go down the drain. obviously go down the drain, so we're not treating that water, things like that, or you're watering maybe out of the same spigot that you use in the house, maybe you're watering your lawn, whatever you're doing, that way you're not charged for that water going down the system, because you would do those activities in the summertime, obviously, not in the wintertime typically. The second part about that.
Right, for residential customers, all we need, if you have a leak or something like that, it occurs between January and March, all we need is a copy of a plumber's bill, so we're, we allow the, to, I'm sorry, the evaluation of the bill to adjust it that way, and then commercial customers, if they have cooling water or things like that, that don't go down the drain and it's metered, then we allow that as well, so we help, we try to make it fair for the residential and the commercial customers.
Yeah, that's a good point on the commercial, so we'll get people, hey, you know, may they get a new facility, or they're moved into a new facility, and they, and this is, this actually happened where, hey, you know, we're using all this water, but a lot of it's cooling water, you know, in their HVACs, and so, you know, we work with them to get that remetered a different way so they could reduce their bill, so, but it's kind of case by case basis, I guess we'd say, so we're not so large, we can't kind of look at those things.
Councilman Fitzwater?
Because I've seen this a couple of times, I appreciate, don't think I've asked this question before, but if I'm reading this table right in the ordinance, we had a three or four-year gap where we didn't increase the rates, am I reading that correct?
Four years, yes.
Why?
Just like this, it's probably anything, you know, so to afford the capital we're talking about, we figured, okay, we can go through 2027 just like this, and this would be adopted to get, to get that level of capital improvement, same was done last time through 2017, the thought was, okay, give everybody a deep breath, we'll look, evaluate our needs again and come back, that ended up being four years later. Now, in reality, what I learned from dealing with our consultant, who helped us develop this, actually, a rate consultant that's done work for the city in the past, Rafftilis, they said, oh man, if you guys only would have kept up with 2% a year, you know, we could have knocked some of those fives down a little bit, maybe, but, you know, so we're kind of playing catch-up a little bit for those four years of relief.
Well, that was my point.
Yeah.
That we went four years without a rate increase, so some of what we're doing is a catch-up, because we had been fairly consistent, small increases, four-year gap, and now we're doing a little bit to make up, to meet what we need, is that an act, am I reading it right?
Yeah, that's totally right, and I think, Eric, you can help me out on the, our last rate table, what were the percentages, roughly, they were higher? Yeah, they were actually six at that time, so we, we tried to work with our consultant, said, okay, let's try to max out at five, as you can see on the table, and see, how does that, how does that get us there, you know, and not, and do kind of something incrementally this, yet this year, and go from there, so that, that was our criteria, you know, you can slice this different ways, now all this is assuming, so what happened, I go back to the rate table in that time, so I think it was 2013, we had the EPA issue? Yeah, so in 2013, we had a compliance issue, we had that rate table in place, so we were able to work with the regulators at that time and say, okay, we'll do, we'll promise to do all these projects in the next so many years, and pay this fine, or get this fine suspended because we're going to do this instead, things like that, and so by having this in place, we could, we could promise we would do those quickly, and, and the regulators bought off on that, so we didn't have to adjust anybody's rates. So, again, having, having something like this in place, in case something were to happen besides what we need to do, we can always have a little flexibility with our regulators so that if something, we get in compliance issue again, hopefully we'll be able to come out of that and not, not go too far with our rates.
Any other questions? Okay, at this point, we will open the public hearing portion, is there anyone here that would like to speak on Bill 202075? Seeing none, we will take up the associated Bill 202075, this is, do we have one online? Any questions online? Okay. Mrs. Donaldson?
An ordinance amending Chapter 29 Sewers and Sewage Disposal of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by adjusting sewer rates.
Any council discussion, deliberation questions? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item six, appointments by the mayor, Mrs. Strope.
Thank you. So we recently created the Historic Preservation Code Revision Committee, and this is an ad hoc committee, and so we would like to recommend appointments to that committee. The following individuals are recommended: Donna Dietz, Brad Schaefer, Dr. Deborah Green, Reverend Cassandra Gould, Glover Brown, Stacy Young, Holly Stitt, Dr. Roger Youngmeyer, Doug Record, and Steve Byly.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any further discussion? And I do have a question, after this, do we appoint a city liaison to the board?
Right, I think that is the planning and zoning liaison would serve.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I noticed, it's on the agenda for planning and zoning.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seven, presentations from staff consultants invited guests, we have none this evening. Item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff, our committee meetings are scheduled on JeffersonCityMo.gov under the calendar, and we have four standing committees, are there any council reports this evening for council committees? Councilman Schreiber?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the public safety meeting will be moved for this month, be Tuesday, June the 29th at 7:30 at the Hyde Park Facility, Fire Facility, and we moved it because we didn't want to interfere with the finance committee meeting that's scheduled for the same time on Thursday, normally when we have our meetings, so Tuesday, 6:29, 7:30 at Hyde Park for public safety.
Okay, any other committee reports? Councilman Fitzwater?
Looking at, I think we're on for this Thursday, June the 10th at 7:30 here at City Hall.
And right now, fairly short list of topics.
Thank you, any other committee reports? And item B, Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Activate Jefferson City 2040 is the name of the draft comprehensive plan coming before the session this Thursday, it's the first major update in 25 years to the comprehensive plan, a total rewrite, the Planning and Zoning Commission has been actively involved in development of this, so have stakeholders and other members of the community, so we're having one public hearing, we've had several other public events, but we're having a public hearing this Thursday before Planning and Zoning Commission, where they may consider adopting the plan, I'd like to invite everybody, it will be in this room at 5:15, it's also available online, and you can go to the city's website to find out more about it, there's a link in the upper left-hand column of some of the buttons on the city's homepage. Glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, and Mr. Marash has an announcement for a ribbon cutting.
Yes, thank you, so tomorrow we'll have a ribbon cutting for the East High Street project, that was a city county project, it's been done for a little while now, but we, we finally got all the punch list items done, and actually this item on the consent agenda about a permissive use right of way, is some residents wanting to put a new fence in, it's on the right of way as a result of that project, but the, it'll be tomorrow at 1 o'clock, and it'll be held over at High and Riverside there by East School.
Thank you, and Councilman Kimna is going to tell us about Porch Fest.
Yeah, Porch Fest is back on Capitol Avenue, starting Sunday, it's from 1 to 4, I think the weather is looking good for this event, it's a family-friendly event, where they'll have art stations, arts and crafts, they'll have food vendors, they'll have music, live music on the porches, I'm not sure, are you, are you attending this year?
Unfortunately, I could not make it work this time, maybe next.
But if you're a free Sunday, come join us, Porch Fest.
Thank you, Councilman Kimna, and I also want to recognize as the liaison to Parks and Rec, that you, I know that you have done a lot of work on the amphitheater, and there was, the second big concert was held Friday night, and the Little River Band was there, and it was very well attended, and I had countless people come up to me and compliment me on the venue, and while I enjoy hearing the compliments, I wanted to share that, and of course, many local people, and people who said they had visited from cities from 100 miles away or more, and so that was nice to hear that, and then Kids Fest was held there Saturday after being gone for two years in a row, so it was nice to be back, and to have it moved to Riverside Park was a great venue, so I was able to participate in that, and it was a great crowd and a perfect day, but tying it in with the amphitheater was an absolutely perfect venue, so I appreciate your work with the foundation, or Parks Commission on that, Councilman Kimna. And a couple of my announcements, I'll announce Sketch Day is having a reception this coming Thursday, June 10th, it's co-sponsored by Capitol Arts and Historic City of Jefferson, it will be held at the Capitol Arts Building outside, which is near the ICE Arena, and that's June 10th, and it will be in person outside or live on Facebook, starts at 5:30, the Sketch Day awards are at 6, and so we hope that you will tune into that. A few things going on this week, tomorrow, Tuesday, June 8th, is the sheriff's barbecue, so if you have not purchased your tickets, be sure to talk with John Wheeler and tell him I said that. Also, tomorrow night is First Impact Program, which is parent education for new drivers, that will be tomorrow evening, Tuesday at 6:00 PM, held in the Police Department Training Room, Sergeant Rudiger will be there as well, and I know that's something that the traffic safety, especially for new drivers, is a very important topic for parents, so if they want to tune into that, of course, hands-free buckle-up, phone-down distracted driving is an important topic, so that will all be covered tomorrow evening. Are there any council, any other council announcements? Okay, and item nine, Lincoln University Student Representative Update, we don't have Mr. Stacy Landis with us this evening, but I did want to mention that Dr. John Mosley, who's been named interim president of Lincoln University, has been invited to come to an upcoming city council meeting, and he plans to bring his team here with him, so we will look forward to having Dr. Mosley here. Item 10, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions that are limited to five minutes, we do have some people signed up this evening, we'll start with Mr. Matt Green. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate you hearing my remarks tonight, I apologize for coming into the meeting a little late, I couldn't find any place to park, as a joke, parking garage, that's what I'm here to plead my case about, I'm a downtown business owner, I went to high school here, went to college here, I was Jay and a Blue Tiger, I love the downtown, and I love Jefferson City from east to west, and I think it's pretty crucial that we grow the town everywhere, and it's really tough for the downtown to grow, in my opinion, without plenty of ample parking, and I don't know that anyone here in this room can ever say that they've never heard anyone complain about the parking downtown, I don't think it's horrible, but I do think it is a little limiting for big groups to come and visit basically any business downtown or the Capitol grounds, and I just, I think that the parking garage would be a really great amenity that would be used for a long time, and, and, and I'm all for it, so I just wanted to keep it brief and let everyone know, especially my two council members, I'm a, I'm a resident of the West End neighborhoods in the third ward, so I appreciate you hearing my thoughts on the matter, have a great night, cheers.
Thank you. Next we have Mrs. Natalie Newville.
Hello, everybody, my name is Natalie Newville, I'm here as representative of the Downtown Association, also speaking on the parking garage, I, we wrote a letter, you all have gotten that, so I'm not really going to revisit a lot of that, but we just wanted to make sure we were able to come and let everyone know our support for the project, not only is it benefits downtown, but does it benefits the entire city of Jefferson, we see a lot of benefit to having more parking options available, we can see it really helping our economy, so we're very excited about the potential of it, we're thrilled with the city staff and the work they've done, and all of the research that's gone into this, and we are very, very supportive of it, we're happy to answer any questions anyone may have regarding parking situation or anything else that has to do with downtown, we want to be a resource and work with everyone and really tackle this issue together, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jack Deacon? Welcome.
Thank you, my name is Jack Deacon, I reside at 236 South Bluff Street, I'm coming here to speak about the parking garage, I first want to know, did the council ever decide if it's our function of the city to provide parking for the state government? If it is, then maybe this could go ahead and go on, but, and also are we a function to, are the city's job is to make money off of parking? That, that's a philosophical question that the council has to answer, in my mind, this needs more deliberation, I would love to see it sale on informal calendars, Mr. Fitzwater, I think I heard you say that, but more importantly, I was just driving through the downtown, if we went to diagonal parking on Capitol Avenue, we could pick up 90 spaces, McCarty Street, you could pick up 90 spaces, on Jefferson, 60 spaces, I mean, that's 150 places right there, if the central bank loses that lot or leaves it, there's 60 right there, there's almost, what did I say, one, two, almost 300 spaces, 250 parking spaces, without doing anything, even just if, well, the bank would have to lease those spaces to someone, or if we bought that, you'd have to bid, I don't, I don't want to take it off the tax rolls either, that's another, another point, I'm rambling here a little bit, but I really think we have to deliberate on this, where is our parking needs? Do we need to spend, what, 12, 13 million dollars for a parking garage, or can we just spend a few thousand and restrike our, our city, see if the, if the diagonal parking works, and fine, then we don't have to do it, if it doesn't work, if we're still screaming for parking, then go ahead, I don't think the building is going to go for sale for a long time, I don't know if the parking lot will go for sale for a long time, but it's still sitting there, I don't, I don't think we need it, definitely we don't need it for, for retail uptown, that, that's, that's at a wrong location, and retail is just, it's just not there, going to be there for a while, but if we're going to do it for the state, I think we should first reconfigure our parking, and just think about it, let it die on, well, put it on informal calendar, maybe let it die, but just decide, what's our philosophy, where are we going to park, and do we really want to take this off the tax rolls? Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, one, one more, with the diagonal parking, it works almost every city we go to, we travel all the United States with our kids, Columbia's got horrible streets, narrow, lots of traffic on Broadway, and they go diagonal, and there's no problem there, on our side, we don't have to do them on high street, that'd be improbable, but my gosh, Jefferson, McCarty, and Capitol Avenue, those are simple, I mean, we have plenty of room there, and once again, I hate to take it off the tax rolls, we lose that money then, thank you.
You, Mrs. Amy Rogers. Did you not want to talk this evening? Okay, no problem, is there anyone else here this evening that is here to speak on this item that has not signed up, and is there anyone online or call in? Okay, with that, we will go on to consent agenda, item 11, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Bill's introduced, item 12, we have Bill 13, Chief Schofield. Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Donaldson?
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an $82,649 agreement of DNR construction of Tipton, Missouri, for a roof replacement project at fire station three, 302 Rock Hill Road.
Chief Schofield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is a construction contract, as the clerk indicated, for a replacement, the roof at fire station number three, this is a, been a longstanding issue since our hailstorm on the west end of town last March, so we've, we've done some emergency repairs to the roof, and this is a full roof replacement, when we went this out to bid originally, we, we didn't get a lot of response, and we decided that to bring the best options and to fully investigate what the lowest cost, best option would be for the council, that we decided to put it back out to bid again, we did get additional responses, but we also put it out to bid in such a way that we wanted to define whether or not a metal roof would be feasible, we do have a metal roof on fire station number two, and we're pleased with that, wanted to explore that option. So what you have in front of you is a contract that shows that bid So what you have in front of you is a contract that shows that bid tab for the, the lowest and best for the asphalt roof with GNR Construction out of Tipton, Missouri. The, the next closest bid for a metal roof as a possibility is significantly higher. Have that in the, in the bid tab, but it's approximately $65,000 more. So our, our recommendation, based on the, the previous funding that was approved, was for $85,000 in funding. So to fit into that, that amount of available funds, we're recommending asphalt roof to be provided by GNR Construction. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Councilman Schreiber. Thank you. There's been a request to suspend the rules. Are there any objections? Seeing none, we will take up 2021-13.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an $82,649 agreement with GNR Construction of Tipton, Missouri, for a roof replacement project at Fire Station 3, 302 Rock Hill Road.
Any further council deliberation?
I just have a question.
Yes.
For Chief Schofield. What is the lifespan on the asphalt shingles that's being used? Are they 20-year, 30-year?
They're a commercial-grade asphalt shingle made by Owens Corning. It is equivalent to be what a 30-year roof would be on a residential shingle. Yeah, and there are also some additional stipulations for wind speed. Wrote that spec for Fire Station 5. Pretty happy with that product for the replacement of Fire Station 5's roof.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Spencer.
Um, being a new councilperson, could I get a little bit of, of update or information as far as how we are covered as far as our structures, our stations, buildings? Due to, is, are we self-insured, basically, I guess is my question? Do we have insurance?
Yeah, so the city maintains a policy on, on property and equipment. And, and yeah, so we, we carry insurance on all our properties. There is a, a insurance recovery on this particular structure. And so I don't have those numbers right offhand. I'd be happy to get them for you tomorrow. But essentially, we are not self-insured, but we do carry a, Gil, help me out if I mess this up, a 1% deductible based on the value of the building and a minimum $20,000 deductible for, for essentially storm damage. That is the, that's about as best as you can get from the industry. Right now, we've, we've tried to do better than that. So, so we're not self-insured, but we do carry a, what turns out to be a fairly high deductible when they are, when buildings are damaged by weather events. And so, but for this project, there is both a, a insurance claim amount that's already been paid and some recoverable depreciation that we'll receive once the, once the project is done and we'll actually turn this work in to the, to the insurance company to cover some additional amounts because this bid actually came in higher than what the estimator, you know, paid us. Yes, sorry, the adjuster, not the estimator, the adjuster pegged this project for. So there is some recovery for this. That will, that will help offset this amount. And I'd be happy to get those numbers to you sometime tomorrow.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions, deliberation? Roll call, please.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kemna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Vogt.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Bill passes. 2021-14.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with corrective asphalt materials in the amount of $97,290 for the 2021 street seal coating project.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. And I think the clerk explained it pretty well. Basically, it's a construction contract. One item is that we're piggybacking, if you will, off the contract. City of Mowley led for this same type work. They got a good bid. Basically, this is one, one of the projects in our asphalt overlay contract. You may recall that annually, we spend approximately $1.2 million on overlay-type projects. This is inside of that, about 100,000 of it goes to the seal coat. What happens is we're going back about a year after we overlaid the street and then sealing up any fine cracks to help us redo, reduce potholes and extend the life of that pavement once it's, once it's laid.
Thank you. Any questions? 2021-15 has been withdrawn. 2021-16.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Cook, Platt and Strobel Engineers, PA, in the amount of $50,000 for the transit facility feasibility study.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. And again, $50,000 contract. $40,000 of that would come through a planning grant through Campo, administered through Campo. $10,000 would be from the Transit CIP funds for this project. And says a feasibility study, but when you get down to it, it's really a facility study, the transit facilities. It's our office space and, and things of that nature located on Miller Street. And then also our central maintenance facilities being looked at. And if we could, is there a way to separate those two, gain more space? Our gas pumps, all of those things located over off Miller Street have all been paid through Transit funds in the past from the early 80s. They're due for some updates. They're costing a lot of maintenance at this point. But once we get this done and determine where that goes, the, then we'd be in a position to apply for actual grants through Transit again to reconstruct these facilities. And that's how they're built originally.
Any questions? 2021-17.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Cole County studying procedures for the Grant Street sidewalk and roadway joint city and county capital improvement project.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. Again, this is a very similar type agreement we've had with Cole County over the years. It kind of lays out who administers the projects. And really, it comes down to the city administers these projects, city staff through our engineering division. But basically, we bid a project, things like that. And it also outlines the, the relative planning level costs. So for, in this case, we're talking about the Grant Street sidewalk project. It's a five or six-foot sidewalk that runs along Grant Street, about 2,000 feet long. Also, some work at the entrance to the new amphitheater at the Riverside Park. And so part, as part of the county's $5.5 million commitment to do projects inside the city, this would tag about 550,000 of that for this project. And then the remainder, remaining 100 would come from the Parks Department for projects. Our engineering department designed the, designed the project and have to answer any questions.
Any questions? 2021-18.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Cole County studying procedures for the MSP joint city and county capital improvement project.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. Kind of a companion, but basically outlining that the city would be responsible for implementing this project and spending, you know, the county would then contribute the funds. But, but they would go towards the MSP project, and we've talked about this at several meetings. But the city did get the EDA grant. We refer to it as Economic Development Administration Grant for infrastructure at the MSP site. And at that time, you know, we had enough to cover the grant. But with the excess funds now available from the Clark Dunkland that we had originally contemplated, we'll be able to shift those funds here, fulfill all our commitments that we have with the state for getting the property there. And so the total project ended up to be about $4.5 million. The county would contribute their $1,553,000, a little more. And then the city portion of that one point, or excuse me, $5.5 million commitment for city-county projects would be about 1.4 for this, this project. And then, of course, the grant at 1.5. So all of that would build streets and various infrastructures and clearing stormwater, sidewalk, lighting, et cetera.
Any questions? 2021-19.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2021 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the general fund.
Mr. Helmig.
Thank you. We're going to actually present on both 19 and 20. So I don't know if you need to read that.
Sure. 2021-20, an ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2021 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, by appropriating additional funds within the general fund.
Thank you. So the first thing we're going to talk about is code enforcement programs made great strides over the last couple of years, increasing the number of violation notices that we've issued, improving voluntary compliance and increasing proactiveness. With an increased budget, the staff can continue making great strides in code enforcement without negatively affecting the other areas of operation. This supplemental request would fund the estimated abatement of nuisances for the remainder of this fiscal year without depleting other funding categories. Our average for the last six years is about $38,000 a year that we spend on abatements. As you see by the chart that's included with the documents, we have been able to decrease those over the last four years. So far this year, we're at $12,454. With that $15, or $15,000 supplemental appropriation, it puts us in line with what we spent in fiscal year 2020. Those funds, we do recover a significant amount of them through tax liens, personal judgments, and bills that are sent to the owners of the property. Average is about 160% we have with the administrative fees that we charge as well. Any questions on the abatement part before we move forward? So dangerous buildings. Purpose of the Dangerous Buildings Ordinance, provided just equitable practice for repairing, ordering the vacation of or demolition of buildings or structures that endanger life. These are properties that are dangerous. They're not just properties that look bad. We were able to demolish four structures in the fiscal year 2020 due to supplemental appropriation that we received from funds that were left over the demolition of 200 East High. One of those properties was 112 East Ashley. It was a fire burn. Total loss was site of multiple trespassings and illegal activities. You see the before and afters. 1001 Washington had structural issues as well as hazardous materials inside. It is now a green grass lot. 1421 St. Mary's was in partial collapse. We're able to remove that structure and it's now an open green lot. And 519 East Capital, this structure was collapsing from the back, also had further storm damage. It was about eight inches from the white structure on the, the right side that was occupied. And now it's, it's an empty lot with grass growing on it. The only one that we were able to fund with our 2021 demolition budget was 1324 East Miller. This is a property where the back half of the structure, as you can see, was falling into the neighboring property, which was a multifamily occupied structure. So we used our entire abatement budget for demolitions for this year to remove that structure. The process of the city code to declare buildings dangerous and a nuisance have been followed already for 209 Jackson, 405 East Capital, 108 Jackson, 500 East Ashley, 410 East Hessway, and also we're adding 320 East Miller to that. Those buildings have been ordered for demolition. They've been through the hearing process and they're ready to go. We have 11 properties that are already through the entire process, just waiting funding. We have another 13 as of when I presented this to the Finance Committee and have actually added two more since then. So we're sitting at about 27 properties that are going to need to be demolished over the next years. With the current budget that we have and it being at $0 for this fiscal year, we just continue developing a backlog. Some of the properties that we're looking at for demolition using this supplemental appropriation, 320 East Miller, the roof is falling. The entire side of the structure is starting to cave in on the side that's about two and a half feet from an occupied multifamily home. 431 West Miller, this one is consistently getting broken into. When PD went there to clear, we determined that the structure has significantly deteriorated since the last time we were there. You can see the floors are rotting out. The ceilings are falling in. So this one's actually been moved up the list to one that's a priority now. 410 East Hessway is a complete fire burn with no insurance proceeds. Also, the site of trespassing and illegal activities. 108 Jackson, roof collapse in the front and back. As you can see, the plywood keeps getting plied off the doors and windows, allowing people to squat inside and do different activities. 405 East Capitals had a complete roof collapse and it is close to the sidewalk. And again, we have issues with people breaking into the structure. Anytime a structure is broken into, that requires code enforcement as well as PD to go through the structure, clear it, make sure there's no people left inside and then resecure that structure, which then uses our abatement budget on top of risking the lives of fire, PD, code enforcement and others. 209 Jackson, this one, the chimneys are collapsing. The entire inside of the structure is completely rotted out. This is approximately eight feet from an alleyway. And also, the property on the left is getting rehabbed right now, which is Ivy Terrace, which means we're going to have an increase in traffic and foot traffic in that area. So this one moved up as far as priorities go as well. Besides those ones that I gave as examples, we do have 20-some others that are either through the process or as of July 20th, when I have my next round of hearings, that'll be ready to go through the process. This is a very active list. We do move buildings up and down as we determine there's further deterioration. There's, there's issues with life safety. So the ones that we gave here are an example of what we could do with the supplemental appropriation. But if something happens tomorrow, we might have to switch some of those depending on what's best for the community and as far as the neighborhood goes. So with that, I know I went through it quickly, but I will answer any questions if anybody has.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Fitzwater.
I don't really have a question. I just have a couple of comments and I appreciate that presentation. I've heard it a couple of times. I think this is a critical issue for our city and I appreciate the work that has gone into the presentations. One of the questions we did ask, or someone asked at meetings, by virtue of a larger block of money, could they use economy of scale? So instead of doing these projects one at a time, could we send out RFPs for a large number of projects? So I know, I think this started at 150,000. It was amended to 200,000 at some point. I certainly support that. And if there's an opportunity to take that number even higher, I would support that. I think this is something visible that our community sees every day, especially in a very critical corridor, Capitol Avenue and streets off of that. So I commend the staff for their work on this and for bringing the project list to us. I don't know what availability of additional dollars, but I would support taking that number even higher if it's possible before we vote on it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, so we'll take this up at our next meeting. Thank you. 2020, 20, I'm sorry, 2021-21.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing a portion of an unnamed right-of-way in the portion of Marshall Street, south of East Dunkland Street.
Sorry about that. So on ordinance 21, so in doing further homework on that, it looks like that this particular vacation may be something that we have already done as part of the community park project. So we're going to dig into those documents and, and see. It wasn't completely apparent, but I have staff telling me that, that that was part of a package of the overall easements over part of the community project, community park project a couple of years ago. So we're going to dig into that a little bit, but that may be something that we request the sponsor to withdraw for the next meeting. So hopefully, we don't need to worry about that one.
Okay.
In particular.
And number 22, Mr. Moleman.
So 22 is a ordinance that would vacate the right-of-way that is within the block of the City Hall complex. So generally, it's called Hanley Way from Adams Street to Monroe and then the unnamed alley that runs from Miller to the police parking lot. And so this, this ordinance started as a request from the Police Department and essentially it's security concerns. So when a piece of property is designated as right-of-way, So when a piece of property is designated as right of way, right of way designates that that property is open to the public, to the traveling public. And so, so when, when something is a street, it, the courts say that those streets are generally open to the public for things, for like transversing the property, for free speech activities. And you know, essentially it allows people to be back there. And so in addition to being an alleyway that, you know, serves the function of moving streets from Monroe to Adams, it also serves a very important operational function for City Hall, municipal court, and for most importantly, police. And so police had concerns that essentially because it's a street, they can't, you know, really control who's back there. We have police cars back there, we have police, you know, personal vehicles back there, we have, you know, our fleet of public works and planning, public, planning and protective services vehicles all back there. And its nature as a, as an alleyway, as a public street, means that we can't exclude people from being back there. Essentially they would have the right to be back there and that poses all types of concerns from a security aspect. And so what this ordinance would do would vacate it and it would essentially turn it back into a fee simple property that is owned by the city as a property owner and not as the government. And so that way, as a property owner, we can say, you know, this alleyway is for official city business or official police business and that if, if the need arose, we are able to exclude people from that property in a more effective and legally sound way than if we were trying to exclude people from the public right of way. And so, so this request originate with police ran through my office and it's here for the city council's consideration, but it's really from the safety and security aspect that we're asking the city council to vacate these public ways.
Thank you. I'll have Mrs. Donaldson read the bill and then we'll take questions.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri vacating and discontinuing the right of way in in lot 610 from Hanley Way Alley and Adams Street to Monroe Street and the 20-foot alley from Miller Street that attaches perpendicularly to the Hanley Way Alley.
Are there any questions, comments? A 2021, 23.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri adding a new article to the transportation code and approving a form license agreement.
Mr. Moleman.
Thank you. So this ordinance really accomplishes two things. So the first thing it does is it implements some new regulations regarding scooter ride-sharing businesses. The, the term and denom, if you will, is small vehicle shared active transportation operation, but I just call it scooters. And so what this does, this adds a new article to our transportation code, which addresses both licensure of scooter, scooter rental companies and then also some operational standards. So generally scooters fall within the definition of bicycles in our more general codes, but these, these operational standards would apply to scooters when they are being used as part of an overall business. And so they have both operational standards, you know, things like, you know, don't ride on sidewalks, ride on streets and greenways that are a minimum of 10 feet wide, don't hang off the back. Don't, don't use in, in weather, where it is dangerous. Riders are required to take a photo when they park their small vehicles and turn it in, essentially upload it to the, to the mobile app. And then a variety of parking regulations, because I think everyone realizes after our last experience that kind of the big thing with the scooters is the parking of the scooters. And so this code requires that the parking be done in a way that doesn't, that minimally affects the sidewalks and tries to ensure that there are throughways still on the, on the sidewalks for pedestrians and other users of the sidewalks. The other thing that this does is that it approves a form license agreement. And so if we, we return back to our conversations in front of the city council about the scooter programs, what the city council essentially said is that the city council was not interested in authorizing a single franchise exclusive scooter company, the only one to operate within the city, rather to have a more open program where anyone who comes into the city and wants to operate a scooter program and comply with some general regulations is able to, is able to, you know, do that business within the city. And so what this ordinance does, it approves a form agreement that anyone that comes in can execute that form agreement and then that would serve as their business license. And so instead of each agreement coming in front of the city council, this would be a form agreement that the city administrator can sign on an administrative level, basically stating, here's our minimum requirements for operating a scooter, scooter business within Jefferson City. And so that scooter business or that's that form license addresses a few things. It addresses these operational parking standards and requires that the companies put this information out to their riders, but also makes the companies responsible for making sure that the, that these standards are being complied with and actually requires a bond to be placed by the company. So that way, if for whatever reason the company is not being responsive, the city can, can address, you know, scooters that are laying out in the middle of the sidewalk or out in the middle of the street and actually charge the, against that bond, the, the company for fixing their problem. And then there's also some, some things about that the city can essentially impound scooters that, you know, are being addressed and, you know, making sure that the city is getting compensated for any efforts that we're putting into cleaning up their mess. And so what it does, it creates an incentive for the, for the companies, whoever that is, to make sure that their program is being done in a way that minimally impacts the public ways and particularly the sidewalks. The license agreement also sets forth a licensure fee. So essentially because the license agreement is acting as a business license, it also sets the business license fee, which is 25 cents per ride that is initiated within the Appropriate insurance and indemnifications for the city is included within the, within the agreement. And also a kind of a maximum fleet size. So we don't want one company kind of flooding the market and being able to dominate the market in that way by just putting out an unreasonable amount of scooters. This, this sets a reasonable amount and then essentially makes them stick to it and then come back to the city council for approval to increase that. And there's some provisions there that they're supposed to show that, that the increase is justified through ridership. Also important to folks like Sonny, there's some data sharing requirements that the city is able to look at the data that's being generated kind of on an aggregate level. So that way we know ridership, ridership usage and where these things are being used and how it's impacting our overall transportation system. I think that is probably enough, but if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Councilman Hensley.
Thanks. Ryan, I don't think you mentioned this part, but there's also a really broad sole city discretion termination clause.
Right, there is. And so, so in here, it basically says if the city council, for whatever reason, says, you know, this is too much for Jefferson City, this is impacting our, our public, you know, negatively in two ways, there is a broad kind of escape clause that basically says, we're going to wrap this up and this isn't for us.
Any other questions? Councilman Spencer.
So have you had any multiple interest with companies coming in in our community to provide this service?
Yes. So, so what kind of originally drove the conversation was that Bird Scooters, from what I can tell, they were making kind of a broad outreach to a bunch of cities within Missouri. And so this was actually shared with Bird and they are, they're, you know, they, they're willing to sign it and they want to start operation as soon as possible. If passed by the city council, we will get this out to other scooter companies as well. It's, you know, fair is fair and, you know, we're doing a non-exclusive program here. So.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilman Lester.
From, from our last experience, do we know how much the average monthly usage of scooters was at last?
No. And one of the, one of the problems we had with our last experience was the data sharing. We ended up not getting nearly as much data as, as we were, that we were hoping for. I think we got some complete data for some winter months, which really doesn't tell you a whole lot. So we were, we were pretty disappointed with the data that we got in the last program. And so the provisions that we hear is a little bit more specific as to what we're expecting.
And I guess this is a patterned off of some other cities ordinances and just wondering how much experience that city had with scooters.
Right. So this is in large part patterned off of what they're doing in Columbia. So Columbia, while this agreement has been in place since March, I believe, it was a part of a longer pilot program that the city and the university ran, I believe, two years before it went in place in March. But the provisions there, you know, a lot of it were kind of university and Columbia specific, those were stripped out and were left with kind of the more basic requirements.
Any other questions? Okay, item 13, bills pending, we've taken up, 14 informal calendar, 2021, three.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the parking fund.
I know Councilman Fitzwater had indicated that he would like to keep that on the informal. So is there any discussion or questions around the bill the council has this evening? Okay. Item 15, resolution 2021, four.
A resolution of the city council, the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing application for a survey project through the Historic Preservation Fund grant.
Miss Sensi.
Thank you. The Historic Preservation Fund grant is an opportunity through the Department of Natural Resources. We are requesting grant funds, that would be about $50,000 total project. So it would be 30,000 federal funded, $20,000 match in order to do a historic context of the city. What is a historic context? A historic context provides kind of a historiography of your development of your city from start to where we are currently. And then it compares, it's a measuring stick for how you developed statewide and nationally. And why that is important is that it allows for communities to have an inventory of their cultural resources. And it'll also allow us for the city to prioritize projects that we're going to fund future in the future. It also, the big one is incentivizes adaptive reuse for developers to quickly utilize historic tax credits. So whenever you have, especially a lot of industrial buildings, you have a context with how they developed compared, compared to national trends. So you can either go in and quickly write a national register nomination or we can eventually do it through grant funding as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Item resolution, I'm sorry, do we have a motion to approve? Any further discussion? Roll call please. Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution 2021, five.
A resolution of the council of the city of Jefferson, Missouri consenting to the transfer of interest in certain documents entered into in connection with the issuance of the city's taxable industrial development revenue bonds, continental commercial products project series 2015A for the benefit of Zelt Creek Properties LLC, approving an assignment and assumption agreement relating to such documents and authorizing certain actions relating thereto.
Mr. Moleman.
Thank you. This resolution would approve an assignment and assumption agreement that relates to the city's chapter 100 industrial redevelopment project at continental commercial products. So essentially the, the current owners of the bonds and then therefore the project itself are looking to sell the, the property to another entity, entity being BV Net Lease Capital LLC. And so in the bond documents, it requires that the city consent to this type of transfer. We've been advised by bond counsel that, that city's option to consent to this agreement should not be unreasonably withheld. And so we've kind of reviewed both the operations of the agreement and the function of the project under the performance agreement that was originally executed back in 2015 and found no reason to withhold this consent. And so bond counsel advises and staff recommends that the city council should approve this assumption assignment agreement. So essentially what we're doing, the owner of the project is looking to sell the project. And because the city owns the project equipment and real estate as part of the chapter 100 program, that we have to consent to that, to that transfer. So we'd be happy to answer any questions. That's a really simple way to describe a fairly complicated transaction.
Any questions or a motion to approve? Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution 2021, six.
A resolution authorizing the city of Jefferson to adopting the draft Cole County Jefferson City Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Thank you.
So I'm Katrina Williams. I'm with the Planning and Protective Services Department. I'm going to give you a brief overview of the hazard mitigation plan and I'm happy to answer any questions at the end. We also have Jennifer Bowden, who is a planner with the Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission, who is the agency that's contracted with developing this plan. So the, the Cole County Jefferson City Hazard Mitigation Plan was adopted last time in 2016 and this is the fourth iteration of this planning process. The Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 amended, amended the Stafford Act, which is the prior Emergency Assistance Act, creating the framework for state, local, tribal and territorial governments to engage in hazard mitigation planning to receive certain types of non-emergency disaster assistance. When applying for certain types of non-emergency disaster assistance, FEMA requires a hazard mitigation plan to be in place. And so currently, currently we are in compliance. Adoption of this plan would maintain our compliance. The prior plan, as I stated before, was completed in 2016. The Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission, of which Jefferson City is a participating member, has contracted with SEMA and the Cole County Commission to update this plan. The goal of the Hazard Mitigation Plan is to help state, tribal and local governments to increase education and awareness on natural hazards and community vulnerabilities, build partnerships with government organizations, businesses and the public to reduce risk, identify long-term strategies for risk reduction, identify cost-effective mitigation actions, integrate planning efforts and risk reduction with other community planning efforts, align risk reduction with other state tribal or community objectives, communicate priorities to potential funders. City staff participated with other communities in Cole County as stakeholders in the process of updating this. We attended two meetings in the fall of 2020 to start the process of updating the mitigation actions that are contained within the plan. Staff then held within Jefferson City, three additional internal meetings with representation from several different city departments to review actions one by one. That was then forwarded on to the Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission for inclusion in the document. Staff also provided the Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission with asset inventory data to produce the vulnerability analysis. It's a requirement in the plan. The MOA signed by Cole County, the Cole County Commission, SEMA and the Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission stipulates that participating jurisdictions must adopt the draft plan before SEMA or FEMA will review the document. So this is a little bit different than how we would normally operate with adopting a planning document. So we're doing it early. There is a comment process that's still open through June 11th. Comments on the draft plan can be accepted through June 11th via the Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission and staff is recommending adoption of the plan to maintain our eligibility. our eligibility. I'm happy to answer any questions. If I can't answer your questions, Ms. Bowden can also do that.
Okay, thank you, Katrina. Do we have any questions?
I'm sorry, I did want to add that I, you should have had this delivered to you at each of your seats. So I hope you've had a chance to look at those. Those are our actions that we've reviewed.
So any, do we have a motion to approve?
To move to approve.
Second.
Any further questions for Ms. Williams or Ms. Bowden? Or council deliberation? All right, roll call, please.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Resolution passes and thank you both for being here this evening. Item sixteen, presentations from the gallery on other topics. We don't have anyone signed up this evening, but is there anyone here that's here to talk about that or anyone online? Okay. Item seventeen, any council and staff discussion of presentation topics? Eighteen, any new business? Nineteen, I need a motion to approve, I'm sorry, Councilman Spicer and Spence, or Spencer first and then Spicer.
I just have a question for Chief Schofield. How are we as far as staffing within the fire department currently?
We, we have two positions open at this time. We have one from retirement and one from employment. So, so we are, we are too short, but working hard to get those positions filled.
Thank you.
Councilman Spicer?
I think the chief is here tonight. I have a question for Jay. Oh, how are we on staffing over there?
The police department's currently got five vacancies in our commission staff.
Guess we had an incident today, I guess. Probably going to lose one for a little while. So you'll have six vacancies, I mean, six spots for a while.
Well, we've got, we've got five vacancies and then yes, we will have.
You'll be down six.
We'll be down, we'll be down an additional position for a undetermined period of time while that investigation takes place.
Okay, thank you.
Item nineteen, need a motion to approve the May seventeenth closed session minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Motion passes. Item twenty, any unfinished business? Item twenty-one, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, all in favor say aye and we are adjourned. Thank you.